Welcome, this is a regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. Today is Monday, February the 26th. Welcome to those that are in the council chambers, as well as those that are joining us online. If I could ask for those in the audience to please rise for the National Anthem.
And we're back with March Sadness, and the team is looking down the barrel of a 455 meeting.
Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it's located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Weyandod and Anishapi Nations, including ancestors of Chipewaza, the first Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Atawandurank, and Mississauga Nation. These First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Counsel, may I ask if there is a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Thank you. Seeing none. Our first delegation this evening, from the St. Thomas Elgin Small Business Enterprise Center, we have Mike Kirkfleet, who's the manager of business development. And Mike is going to provide counsel with information related to services provided by the St. Thomas Elgin Small Business Enterprise Center. If you'd like to come forward, sir?
Thank you very much, Mayor Sloan. It was a very spacious podium. I appreciate when I present these chambers. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. My goal in coming here today is to talk about the activities of the Elgin-St. Thomas Small Business Enterprise Center. We hold the contract for the ESPECs for this region, for the province. We cover St. Thomas and Elgin County. And my goal today is to make sure everybody is familiar with the programs that we offer and the services that we provide, so that you can sort of be a conduit between our center and the constituents of your municipality, help make them aware of their services, and then vice versa, make us aware of the way that we can best serve your community. We can advance to the next slide. I just wanted to start with a quick overview of the programs and the services that we offer. So at the core of what we do is one-on-one consults. So we have two full-time business advisors, a senior and another business advisor, who are available free of cost to any entrepreneurs, whether they're looking to start a new business or whether they're looking to overcome challenges in their existing business or expand their existing business. And no cost, you can sit down with our advisors and get advice on how to do that. That can take many forms. You know, we're not, as L. Krevitz, our senior business advisor will joke, we're not lawyers, we're not accountants, we're not therapists, but we can pretend to be whichever of those you need. Now, in reality, we're not going to give you legal or accounting advice or try to provide you with real therapy. But what I mean when I say that is that business advice takes a very different form for different people at different stages of starting their business. So sometimes maybe you need very specific information on how to prepare a business plan or how to make financials that your bank might be looking for to finance some sort of expansion. Or maybe you might be dealing with the emotional struggles of a challenge in your business or a failure of your business or something like that. So all of that we cover through our one-on-one consults. In addition to that, though, we have a couple of grant programs that we offer. So Summer Company is the first of them. And if anybody has a youngster between the ages of 15 and 29 with an entrepreneurial bent, I encourage you to pass this information on to them. Summer Company is a grant program that lets youth in this age range who are returning to school in the fall, whether that's going back to high school, going to university, or going to some other form of education. We can be fairly flexible. They're able to access a grant of $3,000 to start and run a business through the summer. So it's structured into grants. They get 1,500 at the beginning of the summer. That's their startup funding. So they use that to buy, maybe it's their lawnmower, or maybe it's their supplies for whatever they're making. They run the business through the summer, and then as long as they've stayed a participant in the program, they get another 1,500 at the end. So that was a lot of money 10 years ago or so when this program started. It's a little bit less now, but still a great opportunity. For us, the rewarding thing is seeing the growth in the kids. It's sometimes shocking how much growth you can see in someone over just two months of an experience like this. Starter Company Plus is the other program that we offer, and it's available to anybody. You don't have to be a student or returning to school, who wants to either start a new business or expand an existing business. And for that, there's a grant of up to $5,000. We get 16 of those a year that we distribute between the region we cover. That's also dispersed as two different dispersments. So you get, in this case, 37.50 for the first dispersment, and then another 12.50 once you've met a milestone that we set for you. In addition to that, we also work with other regional ESPECs to provide something called the Foodpreneur Advantage Program. And this is basically a sort of like wraparound programming that's been developed, kind of go on top of Starter Company Plus. So as part of that program, there's a Starter Company Plus grant, but anybody who's making packaged food products, there's an excellent course that puts you in front of real experts in that field. It can help get you to the point where you're able to actually market that product effectively. So we've had a few entrepreneurs go through that. Misty Glenn Creamery is one of the more notable ones. I know they have a lot of value from that program. Then lastly, the Horton Farmers Market. I'll wax poetic about this for a while, because it's one of my favorite parts of working with this organization. Horton Farmers Market was originally founded in 1878, so it's been an active farmers market for like 150 years, a very long time. It was private for a long time, and then at some point, it was actually donated to the city of St. Thomas with a restriction on title that makes it so you can only use it for a farmers market. So we could never like develop the land, do anything else. It'll be a farmers market forever. We're also one of the few true farmers markets in the region. So we'll always have at least 51% actual farm businesses at the market. So just so you're aware, that's available. Certainly anybody looking for like a value-added revenue stream in agriculture, it's a good option for them. Of note, we're hoping this year to add a commercial kitchen to the Horton Farmers Market. So in the food entrepreneurs that we deal with, the biggest barrier we hear about them having is access to a kitchen. So sometimes they're lucky, maybe there's a church they can use, or maybe they've got a friend who has a restaurant or something like that. There are a few kitchens out there that you can access, but it's a big barrier we hear about all the time. So our intention is to put sort of like an incubator kitchen in the market, you'd be able to rent it to serve at the market, but also the rest of the week. Right? The Horton Market generally runs Saturday mornings. It's an unused community asset the rest of the time, so we want to get as much use out of that as we can. So I'll look for that later this year. Let's see the next slide. So I just want to talk a bit about our funding mix. I think it's important whenever you're dealing with any nonprofit to understand how the funding structure works. So the core of our funding comes from the province. We get $255,000 a year. That's the core funding for the ESPEC program. 110 of that is grants that we give out between the Summer Company and the Starter Company grants, and the rest is our program funding. Of note, this value, and actually, it used to be higher, the number of grants used to be a bit more that we got, the core funding amount that they give us, so like that, less the grants, has not changed in the like 12 years that this ESPEC contract has been held by various organizations in St. Thomas. So the result of that is that municipal funding has sort of needed to slowly top it up over time. We do, at every opportunity, tell the province that we'd love to get more money for this program, but so far, they're resistant, but we're working on it. So as it is right now, and you'll actually see these numbers sometimes presented differently. In this case, this is what I feel is the most accurate portrayal of the actual spending on the ESPEC. The 145K that City of St. Thomas puts in includes salaries of people who aren't organizationally inside the ESPEC. So I oversee the ESPEC, but at St. Thomas CDC that pays my salary, and our marketing person as well is outside of that. So that's what that reflects. We're very fortunate to get 50,000 from County of Elgin, and we, another 30,000 is like event revenue and event sponsorship. So that makes up the budget for the ESPEC. So our 2023 outcomes, between our two business advisors, this is what we were able to do in 2023. So we had 91 of the clients that we were working with start new businesses. We created 254 jobs. We had a strong job creation year. Had a couple restaurants that always helps. They have lots of staff. We had 760 consults with businesses, which is a number we're very proud of, and we distributed $110,000 in grants into the community. And those are numbers, but stories are, I think, we think the most powerful way to talk about this. So on the next slide, we're going to talk about the first of our two stories. So Streamline Plumbing is a Central Elgin business. Jesse and Rempt first reached out to us in 2022 when they were thinking about making the jump into this business. They received the Starter Company Plus grant to support buying their work van. In 2022, they won a small business award. We supported them through business planning, marketing, community connections, and various other support along the way. And their business has grown a ton. They're actually now sponsors of the Young Entrepreneurs Initiative. If L. Krevitz were here today, she would go on about that. But she, through between herself and the St. Thomas and District Chamber of Commerce, has started a youth entrepreneurship group that has been extraordinarily well-attended. Their next event is on Thursday this week. I believe it sold out, and they've got 100 tickets for it. So they're doing really, really well with that. We're very pleased to see that grow. On the next slide, the Candygram, another familiar business, this time from Port Stanley. Jerry and Amy, they've been working with us since they started their business in 2022. They received Starter Company Plus grant as well. In 2023, they received a small business award at our annual Bridges to Better Business Event. And they've grown their business to be a year-round business, which is fantastic for Port Stanley. It's always a challenging time to have kind of the seasonal businesses ebb and flow, but they've been able to grow to the point that they can stay open year-round, and they've added two part-time staff, which is fantastic. And so that's the meat of the presentation, but I want to put this out now to you. And so I'll take questions after this. This is sort of my call to action, and then I'll hear your questions. This is the warning to come up with your questions. It's always sad after you give a presentation, no one asks a question. So be warned. First thing is, tell your local businesses to reach out to us. If you know someone that's starting a business, right, whether or not you know if they need help, we'd love to get engaged. We'd love to have their business on our radar so that we can repost their grand opening or do whatever we can to kind of support them and put some more wind in their sails. So please be that connector for us. We also want to engage with you about ideas for how we could better support any businesses in your municipality. Central Elgin, by virtue of its proximity to St. Thomas, means that word of mouth gets the word of what we do around very effectively. You know, we've got a staff member that lives in Port Stanley. That doesn't hurt. But nonetheless, we're interested in any ways that you think we could do a better job of serving the businesses in your community. And so if you have those ideas, please tell us. We're happy to work with you. We want to, we want to get out and be in your community. And lastly, share information with us about events that are going on that you'd like to see us at. We try to do a good job of like going out and checking things out. You know, we'll go through the fire hall market every so often and things like that. But sometimes we see things that we would love to have been at that we missed, and you know, it just kind of sucks. So if you've got something you'd like to see us at, let us know, and we'll do our best to get someone there for that. So with that, that is the end of my presentation, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mike. I've got a couple of questions. First one, how sad do you get when people don't ask questions? I'm kidding.
Well, you don't have to see that now, because you've just asked a question.
You always give an excellent presentation. I'm just having fun. The Ward One Counselor and I are on the Port 200 Committee and looking at some ideas. So I think we're just kind of looking back and forth here that there might be some synergies. So look forward to speaking with you on that. Do you engage with the schools? Do you go out into the schools and talk to students?
We do, yeah. So for our Summer Company program, particularly this time of year, we get out to all of the high schools. We, because we don't have a direct program that would be to it, we haven't done anything in the elementary schools. Honestly, if there was interest from the elementary schools, we would, we would go and give a bit of a presentation. We tend to find we get the best traction when we go to like careers classes and things like that in terms of getting people for our programs, but we'd be open to whatever.
Great. Counsel, any questions for Mike? No? Counselor Watson, a deputy mayor, please.
To you, Mayor. Best way to get ahold of you, Mike, for sending people your way or to share some of the community information.
So our website is the first place to look. We've got contact information for all of our, all of our people there. So it's S B E C innovation.ca. I'll also circulate some business cards to you guys so that you've got them. You can pass my information on to anyone in the community that you'd like to, and I can direct their inquiry within the organization.
Thanks, Mike. Quick follow-up. You've been doing this for some time. Where do you see the biggest need for services that are currently not offered?
Good question. So personally, so I grew up in South Old Township, so I kind of think of myself as like a dual citizen of the county and the city. We do the best that we can at getting out into the county and kind of being boots on the ground, but it does honestly take a push. It's been, you know, historically with the ESPEC, a bit of a squeeze with like those provincial dollars going a little bit less far year over year. So I would like to see us out in the community more. You know, we're a bit resource limited, but we do what we can to do that. I think across the county, there are, there are opportunities for us to enhance particular services if we could fund it. I think the downtowns of the towns and communities across Elgin County could benefit from a bit more engagement. I also think that at least through our organization, organizations like us, there's not really tailored support for the agricultural community, which I think is another real potential option, right? Across the county, I think it's like, like half a billion dollars of sales receipts a year for farms. That's probably low. I think that's like a 2019 number or something like that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for growth there, and that maybe would be something we could, we could provide service to as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. Always appreciate your coming and telling us about your organization, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Moving forward, with respect to the minutes, any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, Counselor Connors, Counselor Graham.
Thanks, sir.
You're still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Graham, that the minutes for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, January 8th, 2024, and regular meeting of council dated Wednesday, January 24th, 2024 be adopted.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Correspondence, we have a letter from the Port Stanley Village Association with respect to the skate park. I think there's a similar issue and similar project, I shouldn't say issue because it's positive, happening in Belmont, which we were made aware of. Any questions or comments on this? I think it's quite straightforward, Ms. Leach or Ms. Greenall, we're going to ask staff to get back to us at the next regular meeting. That's okay with everyone? If I could have a mover in a seconder, please. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the correspondence from Ms. Dagmar Hug and Ms. Melissa Bishop be received for information, and that staff be directed to return to the next regular meeting of council with further information related to the request, including details on the proposed project design.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number two, special events application from Cannadale Nursery Spring Kickoff. I believe this event has happened a few times, at least a couple that I know of. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a seconder, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Connors.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report SE 124 be received for information, and the council approve the special events permit for the Spring Kickoff Cannadale Nurseries Limited event to be held from May 4th to 5th and May 25th to 26, 2024, between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council, liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, naming the County of Elgin and municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless, the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, and council approval of refreshment vehicles for the event as per bylaw 2711, Section 2 exemptions, and refreshment vehicles being inspected by the Director of Fire Services.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Moving forward to reports from the Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP 0724, final draft, County of Elgin official plan, public meeting notice. Questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report CEP 724 be received, and that council direct staff to review and provide formal comments from the municipality of Central Elgin at the March 24th, 2024 council meeting on the final draft of the County of Elgin's official plan, and further that council consider the endorsement of the formal comments to be presented at the March 24th, 2024 council meeting by staff for circulation to the County of Elgin by March 25th, 2024, as per the County of Elgin's public meeting notice for its official plan review.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving now into our Director of Infrastructure and Community Service, ICS 0624, is the 2023 water reports for Belmont Water System and the Central Elgin Distribution System. Mr. Brooks?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Piggott. Mr. Piggott, he's great. Sent the reports tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you worship through to counsel. So first report here is the annual reports that were required to do under the Safe Drinking Water Act. It's basically for the Belmont and Central Elgin system. We have to submit this to the MECP, and it's made available to the public and for counsel as information as the owner of the drinking water system.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a seconder, Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report ICS 624 regarding 2024 water reports for the Belmont Water System and the Central Elgin Distribution System be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. ICS 0724, Port Stanley Water Tower antenna lease agreement. Relatively straightforward. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I, did you wish to speak to it, Mr. Piggott?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a good news story here with getting a lease agreement in place and generating a little bit of revenue here for the water system.
Perfect. Counselor Graham.
Can you tell me, through you, Chair, can you just tell me how much it was in the previous agreement, the cost?
Zero.
We like round numbers. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Could I get a mover in a seconder on this, or no? Mover in a seconder, please. Counselor Halpin, thank you. Counselor Connors.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report ICS 724 be received, and that council pass a bylaw to authorize the mayor and CIO to sign the water tower lease agreement between the municipality of Central Elgin and the Royal Canadian Mounted Police.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. ICS 0824, Drinking Water Quality Management System Management Review and Infrastructure Review. Questions or comments from counsel?
Again, just an information report here that we're required to do through the Safe Drinking Water Act, just to provide the information through to counsel as to the proceedings under the Drinking Water Quality Management System.
Thank you, Mr. Piggott. Mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report ICS 824 Drinking Water Quality Management System Management and Infrastructure Review be received, and that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin receive the minutes of the Drinking Water Quality Management System Management Review dated January 5th, 2024, and the infrastructure review report dated January 5th, 2024.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. ICS 0924 is the water and wastewater rate study. Mr. Piggott, did you want to speak to this, please?
This one is just receiving, this one is information. Mr. Tan from Watson Associates was in earlier, did his presentation there on the January 24th meeting, and then this report here by adopting it, or sorry, receiving it as information leads into the next report on the financial plan.
Thanks. We're receiving this for information. Questions or counsel? Mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report ICS 924 be received, and that the council of the municipality of Central Elgin receive and file the water and wastewater rate study prepared by Watson and Associates Economists Limited dated February 15th, 2024.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. ICS 1024, Water and Wastewater Financial Plans. Mr. Piggott?
This is the report that is required under the Safe Drinking Water Act for us to renew our drinking water licenses for both Belmont and the Central Elgin system. So we have to submit this to the Ministry of the Environment, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Houses, and post it on our website for the public to review and have access to it.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a seconder. Counselor Connors, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report ICS 1024 be received, and that the council of the municipality of Central Elgin approve the water and wastewater financial plan prepared by Watson and Associates Limited dated February 15th, 2024, and that notice of availability of the financial plan be advertised on the municipal website, and that the financial plan dated February 15th, 2024 be submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing as per Section 316 of Regulation 45307, and further that the council resolution approving the financial plan be submitted to the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation, and Parks, satisfying the requirements under the Safe Drinking Water Act.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. ICS 1124, the Jaclyn Farm Phase IV Pre-Servicing Agreement. Did you wish to speak to this, Mr. Piggott?
I can provide a brief summary for the, for the agreement. It's basically an agreement that allows the developer to put in the infrastructure that's required as part of the subdivision process. This is just, pre-servicing is just exactly what it says. It's, it's doing it before the subdivision agreement is in place. The subdivision here did receive draft plan approval February 9th, 2000, or sorry, 2021. And of note here for, for the public access, for this construction zone here will be off of McBain Drive, and we've worked with provisions there for them to have regular street maintenance and cleaning of it.
Thank you, Mr. Piggott. Questions or comments, counsel? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report ICS 1124 be received, and that the council of the municipality of Central Elgin pass a bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the pre-servicing agreement for Jaclyn Farm Phase IV.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Piggott. Director of Fire Rescue Services Chief FS 0324, donation of expired bunker gear. Did you wish to speak to this? Sounds like a good news story.
It is, Mayor Sloan. I believe the report speaks for itself regarding the donation of our expired bunker gear, which is no longer of use or able to be used in service for our fire department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Thank you for bringing it forward. A mover in a seconder, please. Counselor Halpin, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor's still on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report FS 324 regarding donation of expired bunker gear be received for information, and further that council endorse the donation of expired bunker gear.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Absolutely. Chief, sorry.
Mayor Sloan, if I may, early this morning at approximately 3:00 AM, working smoke alarms proved a invaluable asset to a young family with three very young children. Because of the notification of those working smoke alarms, everyone was able to evacuate the building, notify the fire department, and the Port Stanley and Union stations were able to contain the fire to the garage itself at roughly an expense of about $20,000 worth of damage. I would be remiss if I did not say again that it was the working smoke alarms that saved that family at 3:00 in the morning with all of them being sound asleep. We cannot emphasize enough the need for people to check their smoke alarms and make sure that they're working. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks to the Port Stanley and Union teams for being on the scene on George Street and Port Stanley at 3:00 this morning. Thank you. Bylaws. Bylaw 2844, bylaw 2864, bylaw 2866, and bylaw 2867. If I could get a mover in a seconder for the Bylaw two eight six six and bylaw two eight six seven. If I could get a mover in a second for the bylaws, please. Deputy Mayor Noble. Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that bylaw two eight four four be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Mover in a second for collective? Mover in a second for collective. Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that bylaws two eight six four, two eight six six and two eight six seven be taken collectively.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And mover in a second for first and second time. Deputy Mayor. Counselor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that bylaws two eight six four, two eight six six and two eight six seven be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And a mover in a second for third and final. Counselor Connors. Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaws two eight six four, two eight six six and two eight six seven be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motions and notice of motion. This is from Counselor Halpin. Counselor Halpin, would you like to speak to this, please?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. So we had a very thorough delegation last meeting from the residents on Front Street. And having moved to cancel the parking options for them on their road and put in parking bays, they came forward and said that actually they had a lot of different reasons that they weren't comfortable with that. But that was sort of a difficult decision for me. I'd heard from a lot of them privately and many of them had said that they didn't want the parking bays, but I didn't really feel confident that any of them had brought forward an argument to me that really justified that it was still a good idea for us to put parking on the road. But Counselor Graham has been having a lot more thorough conversations and there were a lot of residents that said that if it came right down to it, there's so much parking on most of these properties that if they had to simply have us reconsider the bays and not the street parking, that that would at least preserve the vista for them. And that was something I thought was worth having a conversation about.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Did you wish to speak to this, Counselor? Graham?
I think Counselor Halpin did a good job there. I think, you know, it's just about making a motion to reopen it for a discussion.
Do you have a second or Counselor? Halpin? We have Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Graham.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Graham. Whereas the majority of residents of Front Street feel satisfied that there is adequate private parking available to meet the needs of the neighborhood even without street parking. And whereas these residents have overwhelmingly overwhelmingly expressed that maintaining the greatest possible amount of green space is integral to the character of their community. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin reconsider the motion to install parking bays on Front Street.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. I'm just going to give Counselor Connors a moment and then I will call the vote. All those in favor? Pardon me. Counselor Connors, we're 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 voting on the motion and the notice of motion to reconsider to reconsider the installation of the parking bays on Front Street. So it's just to reconsider the installation of the parking base. And whereas these residents have overwhelmingly expressed that maintaining the greatest possible amount of green space. And be it resolved that the council of the corporation reconsider the motion. I had a mover in a second. If I could call the vote again, please. All those in favor? Opposed? We have a tie vote. And a tie vote goes in the negative.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item number two, five two seven seven Quaker Road. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Yep, that's me again. So it was back in the summer last year that we heard from the Decosters at Wheatfield Estates. They were looking to have their property zoned. The conversation mostly ended up being framed around whether there was adequate parking and whether there was adequate wastewater servicing. Unfortunately, at the time that we voted against zoning them, they had not been present at the meeting themselves and were sort of reliant on how that representation was going to go. They didn't realize that we would not see how much they do already have prepared. I do regret the way that the vote went, but whichever way, it has now progressed. There is a potential land tribunal situation and the Decosters asked that I represent for us to come back and negotiate this because they think that if we're willing to reconsider at least how we would like to address it in tribunal, we could save a lot of legal costs for both ourselves and for them, which obviously is a priority for us and would help their business and help us to manage our tax rates.
Thank you. I'm going to pass over to Ms. Greenall for this one, please. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure there is some clarity on this. This is already, and I would ask Mr. McClure maybe to step in if if we need to get some more language around here. My best understanding is that this is already in front of the OLT, so Ontario Land Tribunal. We are not able to stop that process. So in my conversations with Counselor Halpin, the request is then to bring Anna Burundi forward, who represents you at the OLT hearings and allow her to provide you with the options as to how you might proceed with those hearings. But at this moment in time, it has gone to the tribunal and then we must can, we must go through the tribunal process.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Any questions or comments? Do you have a second or Counselor Halpin, please? Counselor Graham. Deputy Mayor.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where we're at on this, like we're, we have a mover for something, but it's at the OLT. So where are we? Do we have a staff report that comes back to this and explains this stuff?
Ms. Greenall and then Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request here is to have Anna Burundi, who is your legal representative at OLT hearings, come to council and in closed session, speak to you about the the OLT process and then options for council to consider. If you wish to have further information, Mr. McClure can also provide you with information just as to remind you of the report that was put in front of council and where that position stands. And then you can also hear options from the lawyer as to how council may wish to proceed. So you have a balance of where the process is today and and what options you have in proceeding through the process.
Counselor Connors, please. Oh, Counselor Halpin was first. Does that, do you want to speak? Sorry, my mistake.
Thank you through you. I was, but I do think that Ms. Greenall explained pretty well.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Connors.
So if we have this lawyer coming back and talking to us, this is prior to the OLT being completed? Or after it's done or? And she's going to advise us on how to proceed?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has not, it is still on the docket, so it has not been heard at the OLT. So at this moment in time, what she could is give council advice as to how you may wish to consider proceeding through the OLT so that she could give you different options, proceed as we have already planned. Other options is to work with the 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 appellants. So she can provide you those options as to how you can consider the information that you heard in the original report. Whether you wish to sort of stand on the decision you made or how you could work with the appellants at this moment in time. Council cannot reconsider its motion because anything that's decided still has to have approval by the OLT, by the tribunal.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. I think Counselor, Counselor, I've said this before, maybe someday Counselor, but Mr. McClure, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. And I guess to put it as a point of clarification, yes, the matter is before the Ontario Land Tribunal. A case management conference was scheduled for March the fifth that has now been, I guess, postponed and seeking direction as to when the case management conference can be held again in in the future. Ultimately, as with any tribunal case, the members do or and council does have the ability to speak to their solicitor, in this case, Annalee Burudi, to ask questions and provide direction in closed session on on that. So whether or not this motion is, I guess, accepted today, that is an an opportunity for council to request council to to provide direction and have a further discussion about how it would like to proceed with the matter that's currently before the tribunal. So I understand that the the motion is is being presented to today, but again, the whether or not this passes, the council does have the opportunity to bring Annalee in to have that discussion in closed section and in closed session and get, give her direction.
Thanks, Mr. McClure. Counselor Connors, please.
One final through you, Mayor. So I'm a little fuzzy on this one. I'm not quite sure. So I can't see any reason why we wouldn't get an opinion from a lawyer before we go through a tribunal. Does that make sense to you?
Mr. McClure, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Connors. So what's before the tribunal right now is council's refusal of the application to the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment and the Decosters' appeal of the of council's decision. So they are the appellants to the case. Ultimately, if there is something that I guess the Decosters want the municipality to consider at the tribunal, there's mechanisms for their solicitor and our solicitor to solicitor to get have discussions. And for the council to consider that through that process. So again, it is right before the tribunal. If there, if council is requesting direction or would like to give Annalee Burudi a direction as to how it would like to proceed with this matter, there's already mechanisms in place for the council to to request that audience of of Ms. Burudi and and present, have her present options to her to go back to their solicitor.
Thank you. Think we have any more comments or questions? We have a mover in a second. So be resolved, the council requests for reporting presentation from Ms. Burudi that details the OLT proceeding options for council to consider as it relates to business operations at five two seven seven Quaker Road, Central Elgin. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Other business. Ms. Greenall, we have you on for the strategic plan update. I think you had a meeting today with.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan, through you. Yes, I did meet with the Deputy Mayor and Counselor Connors. We also met with Jennifer Kirkham, who provided a draft of council's strategic plan. She has pulled together the information from the initial community survey, from her conversations with council and conversations with senior staff. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Connors have gone through that draft plan and we will then be bringing that forward to to council. We are looking to possibly set a like a training opportunity or a session before the next council meeting on March eleventh. And possibly holding that so that Jennifer Kirkham can provide that draft plan to council and receive for you some feedback so that we can do some finalizations before we move forward with publishing.
Thank you. I'm just looking at March eleventh here. Is that a council day? Sorry. Okay. Well, I guess you'll keep us posted.
To the next, at the next council meeting.
Perfect. So, pardon me. Okay, thanks very much. I couldn't get my calendar. Belmont School Drain Update. Back to you, Ms. Greenall.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. At this moment in time, with the Belmont Schools and Drain Update, from the municipality's perspective, we are continuing to encourage the representatives of Craig Homes and the Thames Valley District School Board and to continue in conversations to bring forward some agreeable language on how they can proceed with the alternative drain. Once we hear from both parties that they are agreeable on how they would proceed, the municipality then would move forward with the public process and returning a report to council. So at this time, we continue to wait for those two parties to achieve agreeable language and we continue to encourage them to do that. And once we have that in place, then we will move forward with the report to council for your consideration of the alternative drain at that location.
Thanks, Ms. Greenall. I just wanted to confirm here, Mr. Counselor Bachman's not here this evening and he'd been involved in some meetings, I know, on this. So the Thames Valley School Board, I'm trying to understand who, where the bottleneck is, if it's with us or if it's with the school board or if it's with the developers. Please and thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My best understanding at this time, it's having the two parties come to an agreeable language.
Okay, so is there any way that the count, and to Mr. Brooks as well, I know you've been working on this. We have constituents in Belmont that are concerned about the school being slowed down and I think the council and and myself are, don't want to be the reason for that slowdown. Is there anything else we could be doing, the mayor could be doing, the council could be doing, either Mr. Brooks or Ms. Greenall?
Mr. Mayor, if I might. And please correct me, Mr. Brooks. We could proceed with the public notice and bringing the report to council. However, what we may risk is an appeal of that process. And at this moment in time, what we're wanting to make sure is that all parties are in agreement so that once we put that process into place, it can be smooth sailing.
Any further follow up for that, Mr. Brooks?
Through Mayor Sloan, I think there are kind of two issues on the table here, one being the development agreement for Craig Home subdivision, as well as the other being the the drain that would accommodate the school. So Ms. Greenall's been working with both parties in order to get some agreeable language there so that we can move forward with the drain. So when it does come to council, it does not get appealed. So once that we have agreeable language in place to bring forward the drain, we would be able to move forward with a meeting to consider that drain. Approximately, that would take approximately thirty days from the time that finished report is filed. Another thirty days after the meeting to consider for the court of revision and then we're able to move forward with construction of that drain.
Thank you. So ballpark estimate time, when do you think this will come back to council? And and when I ask, you said that about it not being appealed. It sounds like if there's concern of appeal, it would be with a lawyer. Is that correct? Or is it, we talk about the language. Okay, Mr. Brooks?
When we're talking about the appeal, that would be an appeal to the drainage report. So that's really what staff through the other two parties have been trying to resolve. Language within the development agreements that would satisfy both parties so that all the parties involved would feel comfortable moving forward with the drainage project.
Okay. Ideas on when this might come back, Ms. Greenall, any, any, any time on the horizon?
I know there is some urgency from the Thames Valley District School Board for us to continue moving this forward. I believe they are at eighty percent of their of their plans development, so they wish to move this forward to the ministry for approval. So we will. I would like to see this report coming forward within the next month and we are hoping that we can get the parties to a place that we are able to do so.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Item number three, I believe we have Mr. Stenjavich, sorry, John Stenjavicious, who's joining us. Delaney, is John available?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see John online just yet. I have emailed him to let him know. I will try him again and just give him a quick moment. Mr. Mayor, John is now online.
John Andrews, sorry, pardon me. Thank you, counsel. I'd like to now ask John from Waterhouse Executive Search Firm, who's going to give us a short overview on the recruitment process. John, thanks for joining us.
Okay, pleased to meet everyone tonight. I understand I have 15 minutes for my presentation. Is that correct?
That will be fine, sir.
Okay, perfect. I'm just going to put my timer on so I straight track of time, and I'm just going to screen share. Hey, is everyone able to see the slides?
We are, John.
Okay, great. So first off, I want to say thank you for selecting our firm. I look forward to working with everyone on this very important assignment. So the purpose of this, I guess, our our meeting tonight, for me, is just a kickoff meeting. So what I like to do when I start a search is just step the committee through what we do as a search consultant and make sure everyone's clear on process. Now, because our discussion, I think, will be more just me sharing, I have sent out a stakeholder engagement survey, and any additional dialogue or questions the committee may have, if we don't have time tonight, I'd be pleased to answer any questions either tonight if we need to, if there's time, or during our stakeholder engagement session. So the the agenda for this evening is pretty straightforward. I guess firstly, just want to step us through our executive search process. It's in our proposal, that first slide is what I call our whole proposal on one page. And then I want to go through different phases of the search process, what we do at phase one, two, three, and four. And it's really how we engage with the committee, identify candidates, evaluate, and finally select. And then I have a couple of recommendations on how to do the evaluation when we have larger committees. And then my final slide, it just really dates and timelines because I find a successful search is actually getting organized with timelines. So that's that's our agenda for this evening. And I'll just carry on in terms of interest of time here. So the first slide here, this is our executive search process. And I guess the way to look at this one here, if you look at the boxes at the very top, those are the different phases of our search. And like phase one through five, like when we start a project, it's criteria development, understanding the need. In this case, we've already launched with the fundamental understanding of the search, but our stakeholder engagements will help us better understand what the challenges and priorities, and most importantly, the characteristics of the next CAO will be. The next phase, which is phase two, that's really about identifying candidates. That's generally speaking, a two-pronged approach. One portion is advertising, another is direct research, where we actually reach out to the marketplace to help identify candidates. Phase three is candidate evaluation. Before we present to the committee, we evaluate candidates, and there's an approach and method to doing that. Phase four, selection, and that's where we work with the selection committee. In this case, I understand the committee be all of council, but there's really two portions to it, and that's how we go about selecting. So the boxes at the top, once again, are phases. The line at the bottom is a rough timeline for doing the search. My rough timeline turns into a very precise timeline, as you're going to see on our last slide. And when we get there, I would want the committee to think about when you're available as a group for various activities. So I'm just quickly going to recap phase one. So phase one is understanding the need. So just beneath the box are what I call the activities to take place. And then below the line in the middle of the page is what I call deliverables. So when we complete take us our our first phase, we'll have a career ad, we'll update a position profile if we need to, and then we share we share our findings from the stakeholder survey. Those comments are basically confidential comments are basically kept to the council only and ourselves. And you'll see there's other things in there too, such as the comp survey if you need it. So those are deliverables. Just to do a quick recap of phase two, that's where we go at identifying the candidates. We look at internals, we consider equity and diversity needs, exhaustive research and advertising. Outcomes are deliverables in that phase is obviously that initiative is launched, and the result is that we would have had a direct contact with a broad range of candidates suited to the role. Recap of phase three, which is evaluation piece. In that particular stage, I'm the one who does evaluations along with the research team. We collect applications, we do preliminary assessment. We're always going back and confirming against the leadership characteristics of the call it the experience, knowledge, and education that the committee told us are looking for to start of the search. When I present my long list to the committee, I have candidates prepare a two-page brief that talks a little bit about their unique skills relative to the role. That typically includes why they're interested, summary, scope of accountability, accomplishments relative to the role, and other things such as their experience with councils, boards, and committees, education. And then, most importantly, if they're out of area, what their plan is to make it to and from work and potentially relocate to the community. When the long list gets presented, a deliverable at that stage, basically, you typically on a successful search, you'll have at least 20 or 25 resumes. I do put them in groupings. My groupings are pretty simple. I call it my ABC list. A means I recommend, B means let's discuss, C is an FYI. And then if internal candidates apply, I put them in a special category, and we discuss as a group what their suitability is. And then, once again, just a quick recap of phase four. I do have a philosophy on phase four. I like to focus my first round interviews predominantly on past experience, so you know what kind of skills a person brings to the table. When we select candidates for round two, the round two interviews are really focused more on fit. So the questions we'd be asked would be slightly different. They would be future-focused questions that are really aligned to what the needs are in your community. If the committee would like to see psychometrics, we incorporate them for the round two candidates. And the last part, before we make any kind of hiring recommendation, we do thorough referencing. Thorough referencing to me is not not references the candidate supply, but basically we look to past supervisors and prior roles and just help that understand their abilities, and then we also look to community stakeholders, and then we do all of the other kind of background checks and verifications necessary. And then from there, we help facilitate offer, and then we go to our onboarding of candidates. I will take a pause just for a moment here in the event. Does the committee have any questions at this point, or not committee, mayor and council?
Thanks, John. I do have a question from Counselor Connors. Go ahead, please.
Through you, Mayor. John, your list seems very comprehensive, very well organized, impressive. At this point, though, can I ask, are you aware of or do you know of what our competition is? In other words, are the other communities looking for a CAO at this time?
I I have a pretty good idea who the competition is because we actually posted the same place as you posted. So I know St. Thomas is looking for someone. I would say to to a degree, that's competition. It's a much larger community, and I think the profile of who they hire will be different. I don't consider other communities outside of the geography competition because many candidates I find tend to focus on certain communities where they'd where they'd actually like to live and work.
Thank you. Any other questions for John? Continue, sir.
Okay. So this slide here is a bit of a recap of phase one. But the the reason I like to bring this up again, just to give you a better understanding of what's important for us. So when we start off a search, we always collect information beforehand. In this case, we already have a lot of that, things like strat plans, financial statements, org charts. We have an idea of community initiatives. We have a pretty good understanding for community profile because we just did a search for Elgin County. And then we also like to confirm compensation benefits and what else is attractive about your community. I know in this particular case, there'll be a lot of development and growth happening, so we've already been, I guess, we have some idea of what's 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 important. Some of you have already gotten a survey. The survey went out to all of council. I guess a question I may have, and this can be decided within the next couple of days, do we want to survey anyone else's part of a recruitment exercise? The questions, I guess, for those of you haven't yet completed the survey, we're planning to extend it until next Sunday. And I can send reminder cells for those of you where I haven't heard of it. These four questions are pretty fundamental and important to us when we do a search. Question one is, you know, what are the initial challenges and opportunities? And I would say that would be outside of getting to know mayor, council, senior staff, business partners, you know, are there any pressing priorities? Question two will be, what do you want the individual to do? You may have some important things for term of council that you really need to see done. And I would suggest that you let let me know what what those things are, so it helps me communicate to candidate. Question three is just, you know, every search, I find different committee members have different ideas on what nuances are important. Like, obviously, we know we have to get someone who can actually do the job, but then there everyone has a view on the kind of experience. Someone says, well, you know, people leadership is important. Someone else may say community engagement, someone else may say development planning, you know. So emphasis is important. And then question four, I do like to get advice from my committees on what we need to do as recruiter to be successful. So I I really appreciate any additional thoughts in question four. So that's just a quick recap of phase one, but I'm just highlighting what's important. Any questions on this one before I go to the next slide?
Not seeing any, John.
Okay. I I find generally my rule of thumb, if there's silence, I just carry on. So this is just a quick recap of when I talked about our our search strategy, you know, two components to it. One is advertising. In this particular case, we've already launched a number of websites. The second component is research. We like to be pretty comprehensive when we do research. I would say for this particular role, the kind of candidates I'm going to target are really ones from lower tiers and single tiers. Upper tiers, not so much, but sometimes there's good candidates out that have experience with both lower and upper tier. If the stakeholder comments say you want someone with more business leadership skills, we'll incorporate that as part of our strategy. And then I guess our general approach, we're going to start with Ontario first. If we need to go across Canada, we will. But I would think that this particular role will likely garner a lot of local candidates to understand issues in Ontario and provincial directions and so forth. Level we target is generally speaking, those already working as a CAO or one level below. I'm guessing that the ads will bring in 100 to 150 applicants based on past experience. I know for a fact with the research, we're going to have well over 300 calls we're going to make. And typically, I find I've done work in the general area. So usually, a long list to me is probably going to be closer to 20 to 25. So when you add up to 12 and 5, it's 17. But I'm going to put myself out there, and I think you're going to have more than 20. Any questions on this slide before I carry on? Okay.
I think we're good, John. Thank you.
Okay. This is just a quick recap again of what I call phase three and four. Phase three is how we do our work as recruiters. Initially, it's the researchers who go out to the marketplace, they're looking for candidates with good skills and background, and a lot of it is reputation. You do want to hire someone who's considered a competent person. So the community's small, you hear things, so we are looking for people that impeccable reputation. When the candidates come in, it comes to me the recruiter. I do a telephone interview, I do it in person. My in-person tends to be a video call, and then I'm always going back and matching candidates against experience, education, knowledge, and the leadership attributes because I like to think a fair process is a competency-based process where we're genuinely assessing candidates against best skills. And then a quick recap when it comes to you as a committee, you get the executive summary I talked about in slide two. You'll have the resume, and then we help you with making recommendations for assessment tools and questions. The questions we have are always tied back to the confidence in the role, whether it's around one or round two. Round one are experience-based questions, round two are fit, and they're really future-focused questions. And then finally, I guess, we do incorporate psychometrics when I say Thomas PPA, T I Q, or HPTI. T I Q is emotional IQ, the HPTI is leadership, and PPA is just a gentle like it's a DISC assessment for those who've seen it. It's sort of like more of a working style. And then finally, we have the referencing and diligence. So mindful of time, I think I've got around three minutes left here, so I'm going to carry on unless I see a question. Okay, this is just a quick recap of our evaluation process. Now, I do like to schedule this in advance. You'll see on the last slide, I've sort of proposed a few dates. But generally speaking, to be efficient, and I like to consider myself an efficient person, I like to set expectations upfront, generally for committees. So this is more talking about the round one. We normally, I review the format with candidates, welcome from the committee, eight questions, and then I always find most most councils like to ask some add-on questions where it's 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 not a scripted question, but there's a clarification, and then we have time for the candidates. Post-interview, I do like to have committee share comments right away post-interview. That way, we all know where we stand in terms of what we think of the candidate. And then generally speaking, when we get to final selection, I've heard all the comments from the committee members, it becomes pretty easy to drop off the least qualified candidates. You will have a little scoring guide when we go through the process. You'll be able to score candidates on a scale of zero to three on how well they answer the questions. And then what we do is really focus on the best candidates to go forward to the next round. To have a fair process, I do encourage all committee members to attend all interviews. It's kind of hard to vote if you're only if you're only coming to part of the interviews. So and for that reason, I do like to schedule time in advance to make life easy for committees, some available evenings and weekends. So so if we need to schedule on a weekend or the evening, not an issue for me, and it's often better for candidates. And then I'll just do a quick recap of the last slide here. This is basically sort of our, I guess, called all of the timelines on a typical search. And in this case here, I've actually taken the liberty to put times in for this search. So the kickoff meeting basically is happening as planned, our career ad's already launched. The stakeholder survey is launched. I'm going to recommending we extend our survey now until Sunday to give committee members to complete it who haven't. And then when we're done the survey, I will do a short presentation for all of council on what the comments were, just to help you understand if there's differences or all on the same page. Most committees tend to be united, even even the ones that may have different views on things because you're always looking for the best person to be able to meet the needs of term and council and serve your community well. Our ads are closing on March 12th. I'm doing my interviews from the 5th to the 19th. Longlist packages will go to the selection committee on the 24th. I suggest having a review meeting around March 26 or thereabouts. Then longlist interviews should take place the week of April 2nd, and then April 8th would be the round two. Then longlist interviews to take place the week of April 2nd, and then April 8th would be the round two. So I just one takeaway for the group, and I guess we don't need to answer this now, but I'll be asking the committee members within. The next two days or so is to think about your schedules. And when you're available for anything on this chart that's underlined in blue. Because a good search process means we're going to get these dates lined up in advance. I know mayor and council extremely busy, as are the candidates you're trying to hire. So that is my presentation. I think I'm a minute over. Any any questions?
Very thorough, John. Thank you very much. I'm getting some nods here at the table, so I think we're in pretty good shape, as I say. Thanks for giving us the dates and the timelines, and we'll be circling back. Any other questions from council?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you so much, John. We'll be talking to you. Counselor Counselor Graham has a question.
Sure.
Oh, pardon me. She was saying goodbye. So anyway, I apologize.
Yeah, and then just to let everyone know, for those of you who haven't completed your survey. I will be following up with each of you. If you don't want to do it online, I'm happy to do a phone call or video call. So.
Thank you, John.
Thanks a lot. Nice meeting, everyone.
Take care.
Bye.
We're going to go into closed, I think. Can I get a we'll have a recess? Can I get a mover and a seconder to go into close? Councillor Halpin, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by councillor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. The council proceed into closed session at 8:27 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And labor relations or employee negotiations.
All those in favor? Posed, and that's carried.